Council meeting called to order. Councilmember Clayton?
Here.
Councilmember Kendall?
Here.
Councilmember Warner?
That's it.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Here.
Mayor Moore?
Here.
We are going to have a moment of silence. Silent prayer.
During the silent prayer, Chief Scott Graham passed away last night. Probably most of you didn't know him. He retired, I think, in 1981. Chief?
Yeah, Chief Winn, actually his first name, Winn Scott Graham. He was chief of fire department since 1981, '84. He came on the job in 1949 and retired in 1984. He was, I can't remember the year, but he graduated at Asbury Park High School.
Forty-one.
1941.
Forty.
He came on in 1949. Yeah, he passed away, actually, on the 25th. Down, he was living down in Marlboro with his family. His son-in-law is actually South Cali Avenue, so the services are in line with his current office. Right. Thank you for giving your time.
Thank you, Chief. Moment of silence, please.
Salute to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for As to compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, PL 1975, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided in the following manner. The annual notice was forwarded to the Asbury Park Press, The Coaster, and The Star Ledger on January 2, 2015, and posted on the bulletin board the same date. All notices are on file with the city clerk. May I have a motion to open the public portion, the public comment portion of the meeting with a three-minute time limit for each speaker, one turnaround?
Move it.
Second. Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
The public is expected to conduct themselves in a proper manner. Any derogatory, abusive, or threatening statements will not be permitted. The chair will immediately rule such conduct out of order, and after appropriate warning, may terminate any further comments from that speaker.
Good evening. Teresa Jones, two comments and a couple questions, fast. First, Amy, I'd like to thank you for your comments regarding the park. The perception about this dragging and haggling with the Springwood Avenue Park is not looked upon well because, as you said, you built the whole vibe. You've had the little park space between Springwood Avenue and Cookman down near, what is that, Webb? That's been redone. All kinds of stuff going on the east side. It needs to be expedited. Period. A couple months. We're talking about park. My question was remediation of underground oil tanks from the previous buildings that were there? And my other concern is the parking meters. They make me totally crazy. They don't work most of the time. They don't give receipts. What's happening with that? As I think I brought up at the last time I ran up here, handicap parking. Now that I have to use it sometime, you recognize what's lacking. We don't have enough in Asbury Park because the couple of them that are there, people camp in them. And you wanted to know about information getting out, slips of paper, information, door-to-door, every apartment, every home. That's what Neptune does. It works well.
Do they do that? And I'm asking this because I'm interested. Do they, and this was a great test because we weren't hit as bad, but in a situation like we had where we were being told feet of snow, do they, and I'm saying this from a practical point of view to see if we could do it, do they do that in emergency where they have to get information out quickly?
Yes. The police department does the calls to every phone number and every address, whether it's your cellphone, whatever, the landline, this is the information. Other information, like the recycling, nice colored pieces of paper with your cycling information, your schedule, what it is, single stream, goes right out. And when you come in in the evening, someone's put a nice little sheet of paper on your door.
And, well, can I ask-
And that includes apartments and homes.
Can I ask another question because I'd be curious what they do? Because we do do the reverse 911, although that costs a lot and we only do it during certain, we did it for this, but I don't know that we could do it for everything. Is there, for people who don't, and I'm telling you, I'm 38, so I always look online, right?
You're still a baby.
That's the first place I go. So, is there, would it help us to get words out about parking on the north side of the street, the odd side of the street than the even side of the street, other than door-to-doors? Is there another way that we can get that information out to people who aren't online? Like, is there, if I called all, if we called all the churches, would they be able to get out now?
No. You gotta go door-to-door. Everybody around the world, even in Manhattan, that's how information gets out.
All right. All right. I'm thinking about it. I gotta think about it.
But the meters and, yes, this park business, we only talk about a park. What's going, what's gonna be happening here?
Ma'am, could you repeat your name for the record, please?
Teresa Jones. I'm the neighborhood nurse, and I have a boy that everybody calls me Malcolm's mom, former business owner.
You got a couple answers? Or are you gonna look into the problems?
I'm gonna look into, all right, the issues around the parking meter and the handicap parking spaces. All right, as far as we'll take under advisement, the issue around the, all right, door, you know, door hangers and that, my approach portion about that and, all right, possibly the police department.
Yeah. Yeah, because the old-fashioned stuff still works, and people will look at it.
Thank you.
Hi. Rita Moreno, 8th Avenue. I have a suggestion and a question. On the mercantile license, I don't know what you're doing with that ordinance, but for 22 years, I paid one. And you should have a timetable. They should have, like, 90 days to pay it. You usually get it the last week in December, and then you should pay it. I'm sure you're not collecting 100%, which you should be, but I think you should have a date. They pay by January 1st, or give them 60 days or 90 days, and that should be in writing. Because before, you used to get the mercantile license in the mail, no letter, no nothing. So, now you should have, I don't know, were they sent out yet?
There is a date. I stand out, it has been snagged in the system. All right, a personnel snag in the system will work, do the work, and get it done as quickly as possible.
Okay. And the other thing I wanted to know, we have civil service and we have the unions, right? Is there any employees that are just under contract in the city of Asbury Park?
Just under contract?
Yes.
All right, be the city manager, all right, the fire chief, the police chief.
That's it?
And professionals, some of the professionals. They're the only ones that would really be under contract. All right, we do have, most of our employees are civil service. We do have some individuals that are, all right, non-civil service, all right, and they're, all right, appointed.
By appointment?
They're by appointment, by city manager appointment.
Oh. Why would they be under contract if they were on the city payroll?
Well, there's certain individuals that would not fall under collective bargaining agreement. Again, the city manager, all right, the police chief, all right, the fire chief, all right, so they have separate contracts, employment contracts with the city. All right, and then our professional individuals, all right, who come to us through the president pigs, all right, they're contractualists. Unless I'm missing something that you're asking, Rita.
No, I just wondered. I mean, like, if you're a department head, I-
You want to be specific with me? I know you a long time.
Yeah. No, I just wondered. If you're a department head, do you, you got civil service, you got the union, and then are you under contract too?
No.
No.
Your police chief, your deputy chief, all right, your chief, your fire chief, and your city manager, they're all contractual, all right, employees. When we start to talk about your department heads, you're gonna have two categories, all right? Some of them are going to be city, civil service, the majority is civil service, all right? We do have some that are in what we refer to as unclassified positions, all right, and you're in those positions as an appointment, all right, by the city manager.
Okay.
I know there's a motive somewhere, Rita. They do, technically. But you should understand that police chief, the fire chief are civil service, that's not- But they're civil service, plus they don't come under collective bargaining. They're civil services, yeah.
You got that, Rita?
I got it.
Okay. Hi. Warner Baumgartner, 5th Avenue. I was intrigued by the discussion about the sewer plant leaking. I had the opportunity to look at that roof several years ago, and it's pretty complex. There's a lot of seams, a lot of, you know, protrusions coming up through it. A little history on that thing. I seem to remember a artist's rendering before it was built that there were cars parked on the roof. So, I don't know if it was actually constructed to support vehicles. That's why it's flat, basically. If that was the intent, to park vehicles up there at one time, the flat roof made sense. Now, in thinking about this, if you've got severe leaks, and this is a very complex roof system, I'm gonna make a suggestion from an engineering point of view. Just build a whole other roof, another level over the top of the whole building. Put a pitched roof on top of the whole building. Would solve all your problems. You wouldn't have a flat roof to deal with anymore, and you'd have proper runoff of the water going off the sides, like a normal pitched roof has. Doesn't have to be a full-size floor for people to get access to unless you want to. If that's permitted under CAFRA rules, might make sense, too, to have that accessible for man access to do maintenance on the equipment that might be under there. But you really ought to consider, instead of stripping that off and replacing it, just build a whole other layer right over the top of the whole thing in a proper pitch and get that thing fixed permanently. Thank you.
Thank you. Tony, make sure Joe gets that. Thank you.
Morris Stafford.
Thank you.
Hello, Mayor and Council. Jerry Scannell Long, we're in. Good to see you all here today. What I wanted to ask is, I saw on Facebook and different places about the snowpark, and I'm glad they're doing one side of the street, north and east, but I think I came up with an idea that may make it easier for people that live on diagonal streets or streets that don't run, they run northwest. How about we just say, every snowstorm, you can only park in front of even-numbered addresses, and parks are excluded from the situation, and make an ordinance that when people look it up, when they get a ticket, they know there's an ordinance, but just say even numbers or odd numbers, whatever, easier. People can remember that a lot simpler than north and east, because you wouldn't believe how many people don't know geography. The other thing is, like, to make everybody responsible for shoveling their own fire hydrant in front of their house because it's a safety issue, and they do benefit from their fire insurance by having a fire hydrant in front of their house. So, for the benefit, they gotta keep it clean. And the other thing, corners are very hazardous when they dump the snow, but you have to find a way to figure that out. On the website, let's make it eco-friendly and tell people what kind of plant are best for this area, what plants to keep away insects and rodents, but certain plants are good for keeping mice away from the house. Identify plants that are like poison ivy and poison oak so people know that they shouldn't have it around it. Now, what, want to talk about the roof for the storage plant? Why not get a company to put a new roof on there with solar panels, and we get the energy from the solar panels? We wouldn't have to pay for the roof. And if it's a good roof, we could use it for storing archived stuff, but I know at Convention Hall, they used to store all the stuff, and all that stuff got tossed when Asbury Partners took over. The other thing is, I'm still worried about the house numbers, the time clock, the GPS system, but I'll let that slide for now. The other thing is, when Coach brought up about working with the superintendent of the school, I have one better. How about we work with the superintendent of the school with the kids that go to school and match their addresses to the CFOs of the houses? Because there's a lot of landlords that don't bother to get CFOs for their units, but yet we're still taking care of their kids, their tenants. And the state was announcing Big Brother's watching, but they have a license plate reader for cars to come in and out. We should have that. It'd be nice to know who comes in and out of town. And then quality-of-life issue that Yvonne brought up, there should be a suggestion box, anonymous, that people could drop off at Candace, you know, the receptionist, so they could report what they want to talk about without having to come forward an anonymous box, and that's it. I did it all in three minutes. Okay, thanks a lot. Guys.
So, I'm just gonna follow up, Jerry, and I thought Yvonne touched on it, and Kevin, Kevin, listen, I live in the San Tander, so people were coming to my door asking me what side of the street to park on. So, next snowstorm, it's definitely gonna be even or odd side of the street, and then we're absolutely looking at ways to simplify and make the process better. So, yeah. And Kevin thought of that two days ago, which was a great idea.
Okay. Say it's good mind, think alike.
And just so you know, some of the streets, Bangs, I believe, Springwood, and Sunset have already started to be posted. No parking this side when the street's snow covered.
Yeah, like the park side, there should be no cars parking there.
Right. And obviously, if we take Sunset Avenue, we're gonna go, like, no parking, you know, by the lake or whatever, so make it easier. So, some of the signs are already up on Bangs. We didn't enforce them this storm because they just went up, and we don't want somebody-
Going nuts.
They didn't see the sign, they get a ticket. So, that was a call made at the OEM meeting, but the signs are already up, and next storm, they may be enforced. And they're gonna continue to go up on certain streets, so we are looking into adding-
Yeah, it's a safety issue. That's the main thing.
Yes. And it's to make it easier for the plowing, and then you move everything to one side. And a lot of people took it upon themselves. The citizens on Jeffrey Street got together, moved everything, called DBW, our street's clear. They couldn't get a truck over there in five minutes, but within an hour, Jeffrey Street was clear, and they moved them to the other side. So, it's something that should have been done years ago. It's something we're doing-
We've been asking for years. I'm glad you guys did it.
Well, we're starting, and it's not gonna happen all this year. I know Jim Henry's been saying it for years. We gotta do this. We gotta have a master plan. We have to have a master plan. We are working on that.
Now, the only thing, I won't, sorry, I don't have time, but the corners, when they plow the snow and they dump it on the corners, like, what about the pedestrians that need the corners for the bus stop and across the street?
Well, that's where, like, somebody like me that has a corner house, I have to go out there and shovel that.
No, but I mean, on Main Street where the gas stations are and stuff, they just dump the snow where the bus stop is.
That's a problem we've always had with outside contractors coming in. They just, they'll do a condo complex, and we just, I'm picking a street. We just plowed Bangs Avenue, Bangs Avenue's beautiful, then this condo complex, their private contractor comes and puts all the snow back into the street. I say give them a ticket, but, you know, little by little, we're getting there, Jerry. Thank you.
Motion to close?
So move. All in favor?
All right.
First item that we have on the agenda is the approval of the minutes of December 17, 2014, regular meetings.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
We have the January 1, 2015, reorganization meeting minutes.
Move it. Move it.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore? We are on to the consent agenda resolutions. All matters listed on the consent agenda are presented collectively to the city council and will be considered for approval with one vote. These matters are deemed to be routine in nature. There will be no individual discussion of these items. If discussion is desired by one or more council members as to any particular item included, then said items shall be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. Now, the first item listed, I will read the items listed on the consent agenda. The first one listed as 2015-47 is being removed, and with your permission, we would replace it with a resolution to approve the special events as outlined by Tom Gilmore during the work session. The second item is 2015-48, a resolution approving raffle license for Ark of Momma. 2015-49 is a resolution approving a social affairs permit for the Boys and Girls Club of Momma. 2015-50 is a resolution appointing Eddie Cash Officer.
Thank you.
2015-51 is a resolution approving budget amendment, and 2015-52 is a resolution approving appropriation waiver.
With regard to the first item, number 47, the special event that Mr. Gilmore outlined, I believe that had to do with Black History Month, and he indicated that it was contingent upon approval by Madison Marquette. So, if you do include that and vote on it, we would include that stipulation.
Okay, that doesn't, she moved it, I'll second it. And that doesn't include his going out for an RFP for the Jazz Festival.
It does not include the Jazz Festival. That was removed.
Thank you.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
I just lost my agenda.
I have to get a tissue anyway.
Thank you. Okay. We are on to Resolution 20-15-54 is a resolution authorizing the payment of bills in the amount of $1,552,781.43. So move.
Second.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Yeah, but she's gonna have to be here to vote because I have to abstain on one. She was getting a Kleenex because she was sneezing.
I stopped the bolt.
Okay, we waited for you. We're voting on those against.
Okay, yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes, on all except 5-01-23-220-000-209, which I abstain on.
And can you give anything else?
I will tomorrow.
We're on to a resolution authorizing the payment of payroll in the amount of $903,978.77.
Move it.
I'm second.
Are there any questions before we vote? Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
A resolution of the city of Asbury Park to refund an overbuilt sewer to a property owner.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore? We have a resolution authorizing a place-to-place transfer of a retail consumption liquor license number 1303-33-041008 from premises located at 632 Madison Avenue to premises located at 660-662 Cookman Avenue, Asbury Park, New Jersey, trading as TACCA.
So move.
Second.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
This next resolution, I received word from the attorney late this afternoon. They are not ready.
So, we'll pull that one from the agenda. That's Resolution 2015-58, person-to-person transfer involving FNB leasing to Asbury FNB LLC.
And the next resolution, 20-15-59, I received word from their attorney late this afternoon. They are not ready, all people.
Same thing.
We should charge them.
Okay, we are on to a resolution authorizing a settlement of a workman's compensation claim caption Robert Sahogo versus city of Asbury Park.
Move it.
Second.
Any comments before vote? Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore? Resolution authorizing settlement of the matter caption Verizon, New Jersey Inc. versus city of Asbury Park.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
We're on to a resolution authorizing settlement of the matter caption JCPN versus the city of Asbury Park.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
We are on to a resolution authorizing the submission of a 2014 recycling tonnage report and naming the city's 2015 recycling coordinator.
Oh, you skipped one.
Professional Services, one. Seventeen, sixty-third.
You have sixty-three?
I do not have that. Okay. A resolution authorizing the city to advertise a request for proposals for the design bidding and construction administration services required for the wastewater treatment plant roof repairs slash replacement project.
Move it.
Second.
Question. As much as we say hurry up and go out to bid, all the good suggestions tonight will be taken under advisement before, okay? Thank you.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
We are on to a resolution authorizing the submission of the 2014 recycling tonnage report and naming the city's 2015 recycling coordinator.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
On to a resolution awarding of an RCA project located at 1001 Monroe Avenue to be awarded to Ampecore for an amount not to exceed $24,510 in accordance with the selection of the property owner, Anna Marie Jefferson, subject to certification of funds from the finance
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall? Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
A resolution awarding banking services to Investors Bank.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Clayton?
We skipped over the resolutions for committees and commissions, though.
No, no problem, but just-
We don't, do we have?
Yes.
Yeah.
But just so everybody knows, this gets us credit cards up and running by doing this. Now, we'll be able to take credit cards. Not tomorrow, but this starts the process. It should be very short.
So, do you want to move forward on the resolution?
What, right?
Yes. We have to, yeah, okay. And we'll go back.
Councilmember Clayton?
Oh, yes.
Which one we at now?
We're at the bank.
Credit card services.
Sixty-eight.
All right, yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Okay. Now, we are going back to a resolution authorizing appointments to various boards, committees, and/or commissions.
Move it.
Second.
Actually, I believe this is just a mayor appointment, unless there are gonna be other appointments made by council. There are gonna be council appointments.
Correct. Just a mayor. Right now, I'm on the Housing Authority. When we switched the meetings, I checked with the planning board, I checked with zoning board, I checked with everybody. I said, good, there's no conflicts. A little later, I realized because Housing Authority meets on Tuesday nights for their work sessions, I thought regular meetings are also Tuesdays. So, the meetings are the same Mondays our work- So the meetings are the same Mondays as our work sessions. So it would be unfair for me to stay on that board any longer and not be able to attend the meetings. I'm gonna step down as of February 1st and I'm appointing Donna Tropoli to the Housing Authority. And the reason I'm staying on to February 1st is that their meeting got snowed out Monday also, so we're having a special meeting Friday to pass some very important documents to deal with funding that Donna wouldn't be able to vote on anyway. I want to make sure there's a quorum there. So as of February 1st, Donna Tropoli will be my appointment to the Housing Authority. Thank you.
Are there any other?
Appointments to any other boards and commissions by council?
No.
Okay.
A resolution awarding 2015 banking services to Investors Bank.
We just did that.
Sorry.
B R B.
A resolution appointing B R B valuation and consulting services to perform real estate appraisal work for the city as needed in 2015.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
We are on to ordinances for introduction, first reading. The first ordinance we have is an ordinance adopting an amendment to the Main Street Redevelopment Plan relating to the community shopping zone. The public hearing on this ordinance would be held on February 25th. I'm sorry. The public hearing on that ordinance would be held on February 11th.
Move it.
Second.
Question. So they're paying the fees for the-
Yes. The applicant has agreed to pay the fees to have it advertised in the Asbury Park press to-
Move it up.
To move up the hearing date.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
The second ordinance we have is an ordinance amending the city's existing salary ordinance to include new title and salary motor, broom, driver, truck. And the public hearing on that would be on February 25th.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Move to adjourn.
Move it.
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
You know, the odds are you're not losing it. What do you have?